Good evening, I would like to call and order the June 25th Board of Directors Meeting for the Coast Messe Sanitary District. They all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Director Perry?
Please remain standing. I'd like to let everyone know that Don Stevens, a former district engineer who left us in 1981, died on Wednesday. And Rob knew him well, and we're going to have a moment of silence in his name. Okay, thank you so much. Thanks.
Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Director James Turman.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer here. Secretary Robert Uten.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you. Ceremonial matters, we do have a ceremonial matter this morning, this evening, whatever time it is. We want to, this evening, recognize Denise Martinez, who, from the Orange County Sanitation District, who's been assisting the district most ably and most efficiently. I think that goes without, should go without saying from all of us, but Denise, if you'd come forward. Denise, of course, is leaving us.
Tuesday or Wednesday.
Next Tuesday or Wednesday. So, on behalf of all of us, on behalf of the district, thank you so much. You've been a blessing. Helped us through a transition. This is kind of melancholy to give her something for going away. We'd really rather give you something to stay, but obviously. So, here's a, in recognition and appreciation of your exceptional performance as Coast Messe Sanitary District's interim administrative service manager.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hope to get a picture.
Thirty-one, two, three. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to recruit you.
Yeah, please.
Yes. Mesa is a great place to work. I like the small environment, the family environment. It's great. It's quite a big difference than working at a 600 employee agency, and it's been a great opportunity that I've really enjoyed working with all of you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Good luck in whatever comes next.
Thank you.
That and a dime wouldn't make your resume any sense more.
Feel free to put it on Facebook or Twitter.
Okay, I will. Thank you so much.
Denise, it's been a pleasure to continue to work with you.
Yeah.
Did you know Bob, were you at the, was he at the district when you were there?
Yes.
And you came here knowing that he was here?
I did.
There's a lot of guts, isn't there?
There's a lot of guts. Late communication, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I did receive one late communication from Mr. Jim Mosier, and I do have a, I do have a copy of his comments along with my response to him. As a result, when we get to the consent calendar, I'd like to request pulling item number six.
Anything else?
No.
Public comments, this is the, it's been set aside for persons in the audience to comment on items within our jurisdiction as a sanitary district that are not listed on the agenda. Anybody will have the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time that we consider those. I have no little green slips, but I do see someone raising up. Please, come forward. We need you up here to record.
What a pleasure to be here. This is the first time I've been able to really come to one of your board meetings. My name is Francine Kaplan. I'm also AKA The Priestess of Rot. I've been doing the composting workshops for the Coast Messe Sanitary District now for about five years, and I met Bob at a waters issues class, we made some water, and he said, "Hey, you can do this for us." What a wonderful thing. It was so pleasurable. I want to thank you all for your support, and those of you that have come to see some of my workshops, I hope you got something out of it. I spoke to more than 2,600 people over this time period, and it's just been a pleasure. If there's any time you might need a community member input on something, please let me know. I'd be happy to be a part of that. So, I just wanted to come tonight to thank you again.
I have two questions.
Absolutely.
So, do you live in Coast Mesa?
I do, indeed.
Do you teach in Coast Mesa also?
Actually, I teach at Honeybee Junior High School this year.
Okay, and then are you going to be there with your, with one of your workshops?
No, that, my contract was over a few weeks ago here, so I will not be. I will be there with the Orange County Organic Garden Club though. But I'm happy to answer any questions if you ever have. My email address is priestessofrot@yahoo.com.
Which high school do you teach at?
I teach at Coast High School. It's an alternative high school in town.
I have a granddaughter in Ocean Beach, I just wanted to make sure.
Right next door.
Yeah, I know. Just make sure she's doing what she's supposed to be doing. Like she'll listen to me. Well, thank you.
Thank you all.
I know I've enjoyed the presentation very much.
And I'm sure I'll see you all again at Fish Fry.
All right. You guys are all there? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else from the public, we'll move to the consent calendar, and item six is being pulled.
Okay, I'll move for the consent calendar approval with item six being pulled.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passed unanimously. Item six, Scott, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. One of Mr. Mosier's comments was that he felt that one of the board's expense reports did not comply or meet with one of the meetings that are stipulated in our code. And basically, if there's nothing, if the board member's score at any meeting is not on, is not identified in this list, then in the very last, item number 29, the board members can go to other meetings, but they just have to state how that subject matter relates to the district, and they have to state that on their form. And I believe Director, since Secretary Schaefer is going to explain to the board those three items and how that relates to the board, I just wanted to recommend, just remind the board that in the future, please, if you go to a meeting that's not on this list, please describe on your form how that relates to the district.
Just a quick question on that for Arlene goes, generally, when we go to a meeting that's not on that list, we discuss it either at a board meeting or the study session. I don't, I can't remember going to a meeting without bringing it up before going. Does that take, I still think we need to put the explanation down on the sheet, but...
I just think we're transparency reason, and for when people review the agenda documents, they can see some notes on your forms.
Yeah, I absolutely agree.
What is the wording exactly?
It says, "Any other meeting that indirectly involves the district by subject matter provides that the director requesting compensation shall describe in his compensation request how this subject matter relates to the district."
Question, when we have, at the end, when we talk about the meetings we were attending, can it be done at that time?
Yes, it can. I think the attorney for the district would be able to quote the government code that requires what you discussed to benefit to the district in a public meeting.
Instead of being on the form, we do it, that's been our trend.
Because it's required to discuss.
Yeah, but I kind of agree with Scott that from a transparency standpoint, which we pride ourselves on, just a quick note, on the form goes a long way, I think.
Just for meetings that are not on the list.
Yeah. Pardon me?
Before we start, I think, did you have a comment?
No, really, I think the sentence says it all, or that extra requirement. We had one time where a director went to a homeowners association meeting, and it was clearly not related to district, and then we clarified the law, that's what we're doing. There should be some kind of approval before you go to it, and it shouldn't just be up to the director. And the health and safety code says it's at the request of the board that you go to the meeting, so that, this is kind of like a validating the request.
Okay, the three that I went to are being questioned, and I probably should have done that, like Newport Mesa Unified School District, I went to the awards that the Chamber had, you know, for the scholarships.
The Lesmoes.
Lesmoes, and of course, we've been involved with that, so, you know, that was one. The other one was having Marion Bergerson event, it was at Mesa Birdie Country Club, and it was CWLA, which is California Women Leadership Association. And I said beforehand at this, one of our meetings, that they've been trying to get me to join, and that I just was going to go and see what it's like, because Marion is a personal friend of mine, so I thought it was a good chance. And of course, it was full of all the legislators and everybody there, and they acknowledged me from sanitary and former mayor and everything, so I felt that that was fine. And then, what was the other one? Oh, the other one was Henry Seagerstrom's event that came up, and I went to that and, you know, saw everybody I knew there, and they knew, you know, I wore my little badge and so forth.
Should I ask a question?
Sure.
Because normally, you go to a lot more meetings than just six. In that case, did you go to more than six, maybe, members?
Yeah, I probably did, but I just happened to put those down, but I could put everything I go to.
I do. I usually have more than six, and I put them down. In fact, I got burned on it in the register article, remember? Because I got, I was the leading contender of meetings, but they were all legitimate meetings, when they did that exhumance about people going to card dance parties and stuff like that. I think the public needs to know everything we do, and if I go to 10 meetings, I'm only, still only going to get paid for six, or a stipend.
Yeah.
That's what I would do too, because Jim and I just left the Sarcad meeting, and I don't get paid for that because we're meeting tonight, but we still attend.
Yeah, and I'm heavily involved in the world Special Olympics right now, and I'm a registered person, and they make a big thing out of it. It's almost like you have to sign in, the FBI will get you, and so, you know, but I never put that down, but I should, okay.
And it's probably a good idea, in all of what we do, including, whether we loan a generator or donate money, is to say specifically how we advance the interests of the district. That's really the key though.
Yeah, that's the key.
If you do that, then you're in pretty good shape.
Well, it's just getting our name out there too, just like we go to the breakfast at the Chamber, and they know that the sanitary district's always there and helping them out and making things.
It kind of surprised me, because Mesa's not on our list. We do have some interactions with Mesa.
Yeah, we do.
Because Jim, you know...
Why wouldn't that be? Yeah.
Because I know Jim has a lot of communications.
This would be a good time to, while we, we don't have that on the agenda, but we have the ordinance on the agenda.
Yeah, Rob would bring it back to the study session.
Yeah, it should be on there.
Especially with the programs, with your son, your phone books, your batteries.
I move, I move, I move number six. Consent calendar.
Oh, we did it earlier.
We haven't moved it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hold it.
I move number six.
And what is the motion now?
The motion is to pay the director's compensation and reimbursement expenses listed in the, or the director's agenda.
I'll second that with stipulation then. You write up a little thing about each one, that reflects the district.
That we all do?
Perfect.
That we all do?
Yeah, let me, ones that aren't on the list, ones that are on the list.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any other discussion? Ross?
I just want to mention that Henry Seagerstrom and the Coast Mesa Sanitary District have a longstanding relationship.
This is a...
One pump station was built by Seagerstrom and dedicated to the district, and they know us very well. We have sewer lines throughout, pump stations, fourth names, so we do have a very viable relationship, and it's very important to our successful management.
Awesome. Okay, any other discussion? Call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Can I ask one more question on the consent calendar? I couldn't find the investment report.
Wait a minute, let me do my official thing, and then I'll come in.
Number eight.
So, we have, we had a motion that was unanimous in passing out of six and seven. Director, you had a question?
Yeah, the investment report, I couldn't find the, yeah, I couldn't find, I see it on the agenda. There was, there was no report in the, under the investment report for the month of May 2015, there was a sewer lateral assistance agenda report. I know we need that a lot, but so, I don't know quite what to do. I would think we need to back up and somehow, you know, get that in there.
What we can do is, we can, we'll bring back, is that marked? We can bring back the investment next one, I think, to these people at the same time.
I mean, it'll try to be a lot bigger by now.
Okay, then do I have a motion to unapprove item eight on the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Does that, does that sound right, Madam Clerk, unapproved? I didn't know if that's in the...
Reconsider, reconsider.
Reconsider, right, findings, okay.
Sounds weird.
All right, then we have a motion to second to bring the investment report for the month of May back, combined with the June, in July. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any others opposed? All right, what did we do? Would that have passed unanimously? What did we do, Ross?
Oh, I'm surprised.
Were you surprised you left it out?
No, most of it, most of it, I don't think.
Under the investment report, there actually was a report, the Sewer Lateral Assistance Program.
Yeah, there was.
Okay, moving to public hearings, since we're going to consent calendar, item number nine.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So, open the public hearing, or first of all, do a brief presentation. Basically, this is for the consideration of solid waste annual charge for fiscal year 2016 and 16, as we collected with the general taxes, and the proposed charges will remain stable for next fiscal year, if there's no increases, and that is basically our report. So, then you open up the public hearing now.
And at this point, I will open up the public hearing for consideration of solid waste charges for fiscal year 15, 16. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing for that item.
Move for one.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That's for the adoption of resolution?
Yes.
Then that motion passes, the resolution passes unanimously. Item 10, wastewater annual charge.
Thank you, Mr. President. For this charge, the wastewater charge for this year 2016, 16, there was a 2% increase in that rate, and that was as a result of the sewer, sewer waste study done a few years ago, and that's when the board followed the Prop 218 procedures and adopted a five-year plan for where each year will go to a 2% increase. This is the third year of that plan, so it's, the rate increase will be a 2%.
Okay, then at this point, I will open the public hearing regarding the consideration of wastewater charges for fiscal year 15, 16. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. So, and since we have a five-year budget, we don't have to send out a notice in the mail that we're having a meeting?
We send out notices that, it wasn't a Prop 218 notice, it was a notice that's saying that your rates are going to go up, just like Apple Eye, just to compare the notes are going up. So, we did notice that, it was in the newspaper, but it's, I think it's a 30-day notice.
We have to send out a notice to everybody about the rates going up, 30 days in advance, but we have to publish in the newspaper that we're having this public hearing, and this is actually just a public hearing where people can come in and say, "You got my property wrong." It's, you know, it was really commercial, not residential, and I can argue about how we assess it, but it's not about the rates themselves.
And it's because we had a five-year rating, five-year...
Because we did the five-year process, it was just five years.
And we did all that, we did all the notice.
Okay. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passed unanimously. Item 11, adoption of ordinance 105, confirming annual charges for solid waste and wastewater.
And, Mr. President, if I could just add, this is just the belts and suspenders item because the way the code reads, we may need to do an ordinance, but probably overkill, but there's not much harm in taking sure we got it taken care of.
Move it.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay, item 12.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back on May 12th, the board directed staff to include in the budget a compensation increase from $221 to $295 per meeting, maximum of 16 a month. So, that is now present, so we have put that in the budget, but before you approve the budget, you have to approve the compensation. We did follow the procedures and notified the public and public notice in the newspaper about proposed compensation, so everything is in compliance, and just, we opened the public hearing and take action.
Question, before we move on, why was August 24th used as the effective date?
That's supposed to be 60 days after the ordinance is adopted.
I counted that out, and I thought that's what it was, so, okay, thank you. All right, then, at this point, I will open the public hearing. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Move for adoption of ordinance number 106.
Second.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, that motion passes four to one. Director Uten voting no. Okay, Scott, so here's your rights report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item number 13 is Resolution 2015-867, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2015, 16, and 2016, 17. I'm going to do this with the given report.
Thank you very much. Before you, I have a line on a budget for the two fiscal years that are proposed with the resources available to us through the assessment on the property tax rules. The 15, 16 budget is, in total, a deficit budget, just due to the trash fund utilizing up reserves of $725,000. The sewer fund is balanced. In 16, 17, it's the same situation, we're using $829,000 of reserves for the trash fund, and the sewer fund is a balanced budget. I'm happy to answer any questions. We've been through a couple of study sessions, we've included a COLA for the employees, there's some new positions, so if you have any questions on anything, I'm happy to answer this.
Does this include what we just did?
Yes, it does.
Okay, questions for staff? Anybody?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget for 15, 16, 16, 17.
Jim?
We were, we discussed at one point how long it's going to be before we're going to have to raise rates. Where did that end up, roughly?
You know, I can bring that back in the study session, it's a little bit subjective. It's in the, I believe it's in the 18, 19 year. If we stay with the philosophy of we need 2.5 million in cash flow, as opposed to operating reserves, so that would be the first year of it. If we go back to just our cash flow model, or I mean, our operating reserve model, which I think is around 900,000, then we would certainly make it through the 2020 year. So, it's really a philosophical.
Yeah, okay.
I think what we've talked about in, within the last...
Yeah, I didn't want to, you didn't need to go into depth, I just wanted to get some...
We'll also know more accurately what the actual organic charges are. You know, there's a lot of estimating had to be done, and correctly so, you know, to determine these numbers, and we will know whether the waste characterization is correct and we'll know, we'll actually know what the tonnage is, and the drought is going to impact that, and many things will affect that. So, you know, I'd say by the end of 15, 16 fiscal year, people will have begun to participate in the program to the extent that they're going to, and we'll know what the tonnage is. And that could very dramatically, hopefully, decrease our standards.
Let's present to the board is an extremely conservative policy on use of the reserves, so it's, that's kind of a subjective thing, so we can bring that back to the board in the, towards the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second for the approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
I can't see that word, opposition, opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Thank you all. Item 14.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was discussed at the board's study session on May 12th, and that is that the board agreed to go out and do RFPs, RFPs for design and engineering services, project 101, so we believe it would be worthwhile to have Rob Hamers be the project administrator of that contract because of his expertise in the system and his knowledge of the project. So, Mr. Hamers gave us a two-year design engineering contract administration proposal of just under $65,000. It was presented to the board on May 12th, and Director Sash will bring this back for formal approval consideration next week.
Move approval, second.
Discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 15.
Thank you, Mr. President. The independent special district of Orange County has proposed some bylaws modifications, and it needs board action, so tonight, we need to give your representative, President Schaefer, direction to vote on the modifications.
What do you think?
They were needed. Myself, Wesley Keen, and another gentleman worked in an ad hoc committee, we went through the, through what was done a couple of years, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we changed them, and we just, there were some things left out of their, like succession. If someone doesn't get reelected to office, what do you do? So, I would recommend that we approve the bylaws.
Move it.
Second.
Other discussion? Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
That one passes unanimously as well. We have, we have the ballot for me to sign.
Yes.
Item 16.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our rewarding ideas program, and we have one for you to consider tonight, and that is submitted by Jose, or Tony Gomez, our skating technician. He came up with a really great idea about our mobile generators that are stored at the city yard. As you know, when there's a power outage, speed is the essence of mobilizing those generators to the pump stations, and what was happening is that when we have to take a generator to the station, first they have to get the cables at the yard, load them up in the truck, and go get the generator, take it out to the station, and that could be very challenging, hooking up the cables to the generators in the station, especially at night, there's nothing light out there, or it's raining days, very challenging, it can be dangerous. So, he came up with an idea of, in front of the generators, he puts a box attached to the trailer, and that box will be the cable, he cut a hole underneath the box, where the cables will be already connected to the generator and stored in that box, and now when we get called out, all he's got to do is hook up the generator to the truck, take it out of the pump station, hook it up to the station, and we're ready to go. It drastically improve our response time, and I also believe it will improve safety, so it's my recommendation that we approve it for $100.
Move for approval.
Okay, second.
I just...
Yeah, but you have to motion.
We have a motion.
I just want to talk when I can.
I'll move it.
I did.
Oh, second.
Get in there.
I have a question.
Are those cords safe? I mean, they're worth a lot of money.
From vandalism. Yes, it's in the secure box, no one's going to know what's in them, it's at the city, the city yard, so the yard is secure.
The whole cord will be locked in the, in a box.
Yes.
Because vandalism is always...
But you said, you said that the cord is attached to the...
Yeah, but underneath, but no one's going to see it.
So, you can't see it?
Yeah, they can't see it.
Can they snip a part of it off?
I don't know.
They'd take some pretty big snippers to cut those.
Those things are worth big snippers.
I'm telling you, lugging those cables around is a lot of work, it takes a lot of, I was amazed that the boxes were only 60 bucks a piece.
Yeah.
I mean, so for less than 500 bucks.
They got to be installed.
Well, the guys did it themselves.
Are there locks on the boxes? And then, does, we, are we the only ones with keys, or does the city have a key?
Yeah, we're the only ones that have keys.
Okay, so they have to notify us if they're going to use the generator, we would have to do it.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's good.
Did you notify them of that?
But the, they have to notify us for these...
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Did you notify them that they need to notify you to get the key? As long as everybody knows.
Yeah, might be a good idea. Just get some stickers made and put right on top of that box.
Well, I don't want to advertise, like you said, you don't want to advertise what's in the box.
I have no saying what's in the box, just, you know, any questions, call.
Sure.
Something like that.
Yeah, definitely.
I was surprised it's only $100, man. It's a valuable asset for us.
Yeah, I just can't, I can't estimate the savings as far as, how much savings will go as far as staff time is responding. So typically, we typically give a hundred bucks.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the awarding of the, award to Jose Gomez?
Yes.
One of them, Ken. When we, how do you pay him? Do you pay him on his check, or does he come into a meeting, like we did first?
He gets a separate check and that check is actually net $100. So we actually, it's actually a little bit more than the taxes, he gets the $100. And sometimes we give him during our all hands meeting, sometimes, you know, if anyone all hands meets, sometimes we just give him the check.
I was just suggesting maybe bringing him to the study session so we can.
Please, in telephone.
Let me just think, because I really don't know who he is. Just a thought.
Well, that's good. Once it gives him a little extra.
Okay, so motion's out, begin the discussion. Call for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thought it'd be a pretty good idea. All right, item 17, CBSA election.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The California Special District Association has elections for the Southern Network C-Day. Both the candidate statements are in your packet and we need directions from the board on who to submit the ballot.
Discussion, done.
I'd like to move that Joe McKenzie be our representative.
You want to give any consideration to Gloria?
I did, I looked at it and.
I think Chief Joe would be a really good.
Joe's experience is unquestionably as good as ours.
Were there other ones?
Just this other one.
Oh, I, yeah, I read the thing, but I saw Joe sing and I thought that was part of Joe's project.
And she's really involved in so much, the finance committee that we need to use her sometime, and a lot of different organizations.
I didn't realize the city of Palm, or the Palmdale Water District was a district that, and this did some real problems when you read the candidates.
Okay, then we have a motion from Marlene, who's second and divided. Part, to vote for Joe McKenzie for Southern Network C-Day. Other discussion? Off the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. That's given, that'll be announced in September?
Yes.
But the results are in August, I think.
Actually, yeah, August as well. September is in Monterey though.
Okay, item 18, Calpers Planamiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wendy Davis would be given the report.
Thank you very much. This is just a cleanup item to the approval in 2011 where the board adopted having the new hires pick up their own PERS and to change the retirement age and the single highest year to three highest years. Calpers contacted us and let us know that we never turned in a resolution, saying that the board had approved no longer picking up the employee's share of the retirement contribution. So this is just cleanup. We have actually been practicing that since 2011. So there's no cost to the district to just clean up.
I'll move item 18.
Second. The only question I had when I read it over, we're telling them the effective day of the resolution shall be August 28, 2011. Does that pose any consternation for anybody? I mean, we're just acknowledging that we did it four years ago.
Yes. We've been reporting the PERS, taking it from the employees, so they just need the paperwork to formalize it.
Now, could the employees complain about that?
That's possible. With PERS, you want to adopt the resolution, they want you to adopt. They don't allow modifications to what they want. It's their resolution, even if it's the type one, if they want it to.
When we hire the employees, this is all stipulated in their offer letter that, you know, what benefit package they receive. So there shouldn't be any complaints. And like I said, everyone that's been hired has been having it deducted, so we should be good.
Can you give me an estimate how much we've saved by doing it?
You know, a lot. I cannot actually give you an estimate, but it's actually a lot.
Like a true accounting person, a lot.
A lot. Well, you know, over the last year that I've been here with the quarterly reports, are a substantial amount of our savings from not having filled all of our positions. But I want to say, gosh, a lot of that was the PERS, because we had budgeted to have the employer pick it up and we didn't. And so I think the difference, I don't have. Yeah, honestly, it's like 30,000, you know, in each fund, if not more. So it's quite substantial.
I'm a numbers guy like you are.
So a lot was.
She's a lot better than you are.
I don't know, I'm pretty good.
I know you are.
Just say a lot.
We currently only have three employees that the district picks up.
Thank you. All right, so we had a motion and a second. Did I hear a motion? Or am I projecting something?
I'll move it. I did move it.
Yeah, you did.
You did move it.
And.
All right, call for the question, and all those in favor?
Aye.
That one passes unanimously as well. Rob, you're next. Engineers' report.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Rob?
Let's see. I've got one. On the capital improvement program, August 28 is dark and July, one August, on the installation of Eldon, will continue after contractor Lee Scott course spent. Could you explain that?
She's talking about the bypass. Right. We actually moved that big tall fence over and that happened, that was the history that was actually last year. And we went through and obtained an agreement with the office to move the fence. And they dug up the poles, picked them up, shoved them over less than a foot, and that was all she wrote. Cost us a month of time, but we get to go. That bypass for that emergency backup pump is in service and working now.
Thank you.
It's pretty fortuitous that that's the driving engine.
Right.
Didn't used to be the driving.
Any other questions for Rob? Thank you, sir, very much. Treasurer's report, Mark?
Mr. President, board members, the first item is a resolution adopting your investment policy for 2015-16 and also then delegating the investment function to the treasurer for that year. By way of background, the investment function is your responsibility as board of directors, and you do have that ability to be able to delegate that to a treasurer. That delegation can only last for a one-year period at a time. The investment policy that is included in your packet is a redline version. It shows all the changes from the policy that you adopted last year. And I wanted to highlight just a couple of those changes. Some of them are cleanup items. On page three of the actual policy under section six reporting, we called out that the actual adoption of investment policy 10 years ago used to be mandatory, it's no longer mandatory. We present that each year when we go through this process, but we wanted to cite the government code section where this now has become optional. Still think it's good practice to do so, and that's why we're here tonight. Next item on page six of the actual policy, a couple of changes to thresholds, late threshold used to be 40 million and has now been increased to 50 million. Doesn't really impact us, we don't have anywhere near that dollar amount. But we did want to highlight that because there's a change in the government code. Also, there's a new security, a permitted investment that we have added, and those are referred to as supranational securities, and I'll come back to that in just a second. On page 11 of the policy, this page outlines your segregation of duties between the board, the treasurer, the accountant, and the finance manager, who's responsible for what. So you have some comfort that there are a good separation of duties and responsibilities. We had just some cleanup items here where the recording of investments in accounting records, used to be the finance manager, now the accountant is handling that function, and then just a title change on the bank reconciliation. And then finally, the only thing I wanted to point out on page 14 of the policy, which is really the glossary section, are those new securities, the supranational securities. In January of this year, the government code added this section allowing investments in these securities. And these are really international securities that have to be guaranteed by, either conditionally or unconditionally guaranteed by three different institutions, basically the World Bank. They, this is new for governments this year. We've added them to this investment policy. I don't have any intention really in the near future of placing investments there. I kind of want to see what's happening with the government arena and how governments are accepting of these securities. This is probably the biggest change. If you are not comfortable adding these international type of securities this year, we can strike that out of this policy. But it is a change, it was added to the government code. Some of the brokers aren't even offering these yet, there's not a lot of availability of these types of securities out there yet. So I don't have anything other than that to be able to mention as a change in the government code as of January of this year.
Question, are you thinking that this has been generating more interest for us based on the last couple of years of investments?
I think that this, this security will be a little bit, they would be, if we looked at that in relation to a regular federal agency security, they would be a little bit higher interest rate.
That's what I saw. A little bit of reading I did on them, I've heard that they're projecting to be a tad higher than the regular government. There's a potential for us to make some money.
Exactly. I think you should look into it and see if there's a possibility we could use some of those securities. I think it'd be a wise investment.
The government code allows up to 30% of your portfolio in these securities. I'm recommending that we don't go that high, that we set that threshold at 15% until we get comfortable with what they are, how they work.
Okay, other questions for Mark? We have a motion approving Resolution 2015-869?
So.
Second. Motion and a second. Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passes unanimously.
Could I make one more comment? Mark, I think, I would like to see you at a study session with us to go over all of our assets and investments, like we used to do at a meeting. But not do it at a meeting, but do it at a study session. Take like a half hour.
Remember, we used to do them twos?
I think that would be good for me, just like in recap, I think that we're doing.
How many ways can you count to 1%?
There's a wide variety of things we're investing in. That's true.
It's hard, you're excited.
So long as it doesn't turn into any kind of insider trading.
How about quarterly?
Yeah, not, just in one study session. That could take us for a year for me, I mean, everything.
We used to do it quarterly.
We used to do it quarterly with two members.
Could certainly do that, and I guess look to Scott on what would be a good meeting to do. We could certainly walk through, when funds are available, what my decision process is, where place that, I can show the tools that we use and being able to make some of these decisions.
And I talked to Wendy about it last month. I thought it was a good idea.
I mean, it's not a.
No.
You still think it's a good idea?
I still think it's a good idea, for me.
You've been pretty adamant about that for a while, Ken, and I could say.
Okay.
You know, actually, it does say in our code still that the board shall review the district's investments on at least a quarterly basis. So we have some provisions still in our code about that.
And I know Mark brings it to us, at least quarterly through a regular.
Quarterly, we elevate it from consent calendar to an actual agenda item to have that discussion, to make that requirement operational.
Item 21, Audit Services.
Was there, there was a vote on that? I missed it.
Yeah, we.
Pass you, man.
On, the next item is an agreement for independent audit services. Your contract with your existing audit firm expired with the last audit. That was the end of a five-year period, and you've actually been with the same audit firm for a total of 10 years since you separated from the city. So it was time to go out to bid again. Staff had developed an RFP for audit services and had posted that RFP out on your website as well as the website for the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers. Eight firms had asked for a copy of that RFP and four proposals were received. Page two of the agenda report shows the ranking of those proposals. There were three staff members that ranked proposals, and the firm Rogers, Anderson, Mallady, and Scott received the most number of points in that ranking. They were the second low bidder. The low bidder was Siobhan and Associates. Siobhan and Associates is based out of San Jose. Rogers, Anderson, Mallady, and Scott is based in San Bernardino. White Nelson D11s, your current auditors were the high bidder, and so they lost a lot of points in the fee. They were actually had the high technical score as well, but being a high bidder, it dropped them down to the bottom of the pack. The total fee for your base period, let me back up. This RFP was structured for a three-year base period with two one-year options, the same as it's been the last two rounds. The base, the fee for Rogers, Anderson, Mallady, and Scott is 29,460 for that base period. We will be, the agreement that is attached, that we would ask to be executed, we're going to, we're in the process of revising that agreement, so we would bring that, have that signed at a later date, and we follow the standard agreement that's used by the district for professional services. With that, I'm available for any questions on the agreement for independent audit services.
I think the only question I had was, in your, I think it was on page two, it talked about they wanted a deviation to maintain the records themselves. Have we always kept the records here?
No, no. And this, this is, I'm okay with that deviation. I do need to work with Alan on, make sure he's comfortable with that. Audit standards, generally accepted auditing standards require that, or indicate that the work papers that the auditors prepare are the property of the auditors. And so it's very clear in that, in that respect. And so our general, our standard agreement talks about the, all the work product becomes the property of the district at the end of the, at the end of the contract. And that's in violation of those auditing standards. So they pointed that out and they said, we would like to just follow auditing standards and say that we're going to retain the work papers. You can have copies if you want them, you can share them if you want them, but we're going to retain the work papers. Peer review runs, audit firms are reviewed every three years by an external audit firm that comes in and evaluates the quality of their practice. Your audit could get selected for that. They need to have those audit work papers available to them to be able to present to their external auditors to demonstrate that the quality of the audit that they're doing.
Do they realize that, and I assume that those, those work papers are subject to a public records request?
For sure.
So they know that, I mean, they would have to provide those to anybody that requests them?
Absolutely. They're in litigation, they're definitely, I guess, discoverable items that would be the property.
There'd be a fight. There'd be a fight about it, because until it's within our possession, it doesn't really become a public record. It's like our trash contract guys who give us selected information from their accounting. It doesn't become a public record, so that once it's in our office, then somebody can say, I want it.
But that doesn't pose any transparency issues for us?
Well, there's a little bit, yes, I think it does. And there's a little tug between the accounting standards and the transparency laws. So we're, Mark and I will try and work through that. And maybe, maybe in a way we can accomplish both purposes.
Okay.
What did we pay the last vendor?
I think the last, you might know what the last audit fee was, it was probably around 9,900, somewhere around there.
Yeah, it was just under 10,000. But this, the RFP that we sent out this time includes eight hours of additional services to be determined by the general manager. So say you wanted to determine lots of compliance with the approved resolution of investment, then Scott could dictate that, or maybe you're worried about internal controls between the. the two of us, he could designate that. So it's a little higher because we're asking for a higher service level. And the fee that we actually have been paying this year is less than the fee we paid ten years ago. So they didn't make much money on us.
Except they tried to give a lot of their money back to...
I think, I think that was the case.
I, I just might finish with our...
For professional services, and maybe I'm used to different process for consultants, I guess I consider these guys consultants. The award is based on technical merit, and the cost then, and the cost is not known, you know, until the consultant has been selected based on technical merit. Can you, and, and the, and the weighting of the cost is logical. You know, the White Nelson deal, I, I'm not trying to favor one firm or another, but, I mean, it's not proportional, it doesn't look like to me. Maybe they're in a different order here. Yeah, maybe they're in a different order. Isn't, well, am I wrong in assuming that your recommendation to the board should have been on just technical merit? Or whoever did this evaluation?
No, the, the, if you look at attachment two of the, of the agenda item, which is the actual RFP, at the bottom of the RFP...
It tells them that they're going to do that?
It talks about the evaluation criteria, how each of the proposals were going to be...
So that was spelled out to them?
It was spelled out to them, yes, and...
I didn't read the...
And in review of the proposals, the way that it was, this particular proposal works was the technical score was going to be ranked first. And so once everything was done with technical, then we looked at cost. And the firm that was the lowest bidder automatically got all points associated with cost, there was thirty points associated with that. Each proposer after that got a percent of that based upon how far they were away from the low bidder. So that's why you see big ranges in, in the cost component.
Okay. So they knew upfront, cost, cost and technical merit were going to be decided in the selection of the firm?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm used to consultants being selected based on technical merit and have no clue what the cost is, and then you negotiate with the, with the firm.
There's actually a specific provision in the law for engineers, where you have to, engineers and architects, where you have to do that.
Okay, Tom, that's what I'm used to, and this is different. Okay.
You know, not to nitpick, but if we were paying nine thousand before, and now we're paying twenty-nine thousand, twenty grand for eight hours of...
That's for three years.
Oh, three years.
This is the three-year...
Oh, okay, I didn't say that.
No.
He said that in the base report. The base period is twenty-nine thousand. They, they had proposed ninety-six, ninety-five flat for the first three years. And then their fee escalates to the option. When I read it, that was my first time I read it, I went back and...
It doesn't read like that, but maybe it does. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Good job. We have a motion to...
I'll move it.
Further discussion, call for a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Then that passes unanimously. Do you like the term of address? Okay, Mark, thank you, Zolli. Counselor?
I don't have anything on the agenda tonight, but I, looking at the minutes, I noticed that there was a request from the board that I prepare some kind of an opinion about confidentiality dealing with code enforcement. And that hasn't gotten to me yet, but I did see that was in the minutes, that there was a request, and I think it's probably still making its way to me, or else the answer is...
I had, I made that comment because on his reports, he was listing first and last name, yeah. And then I said, hey, can we do that in our minutes? And then the last time that he gave his report, he didn't have his name listed as a person.
So it was handled?
It was, yeah, but I was just, my question was, can we do that legally?
Tanner, true.
Yeah, yeah. So that was my question.
Is the question still live, or...
Well, I, he's not doing it now, but I still think we need an answer. I mean, just for, for us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, and I had asked if you keep a log of, and he, he does keep a log of things. I think that gave Mr. Mosher some heartburn that we were doing that. Did you get that impression, Scott, that, well, I thought Mr. Mosher didn't like the fact that we kept a log of things? Okay, then I, I...
That's, that's what I'm getting about it.
This is kind of a hot issue right now. The vector we have it to where, you know, you see a bug in somebody's backyard, mosquitoes, and, you know, does the public have the right to access that information? It was a confidential criminal investigation. We have to get warrants from people's backyards, I mean, it's just like regular police work.
So that my second story window, I can't look down into...
No, no, as long as you're in a lawful place, as long as you're not using binoculars or a periscope or something, you can go in your neighbor's backyard.
I would never allow drones.
Believe me, I would never do that.
Drones is a whole nother issue. The law can't keep up with the technology, I'm telling you. By the time we get one case, the technology's five years ahead of us.
Well, that's funny, because I mentioned that our, that our, something about the legislations before the assembly now regarding drones. I mean, there must be eight or ten drone bills before the state assembly right now, over different, you know, firefighters using it, different stuff. I got a neighbor that's got one. Okay, thanks, Alan. We're going to visit a little more later, I think. Local meetings?
Orange County Sand District, real quick, they received a grant from two thousand fifteen Watersmart. Feasibility studies program, and it'll help with the groundwater replenishment expansion. There also is, tomorrow at nine o'clock at the Orange County Water District, they're celebrating the expansion of the groundwater replenishment system. So I think you're all invited if you want to show up. You know, it's, it's increased from seventy million gallons a day to a hundred million gallons a day.
That's awesome.
And then we're going to eventually, the next step, within a couple of years, we'll go to a hundred and thirty million.
We did get a letter, Jim, from CSD thanking us for our support of the request.
Also of note, Tom Beamish, who was the chairman of Orange County Sand District for the last year, this was his last meeting as chairman. He's only doing a one-year term. He worked this out with John Nielsen last year because they were both kind of contending for the position. So they, and I didn't know this myself, but not that it matters, but Tom agreed to do it the first year, and then John Nielsen from Thurston is going to be the chairman this coming, well, next month, next month. So, but they're both good guys. Tom is wonderful, was, did a great job, I thought. And John Nielsen is very capable as well, so we won't be lacking for good leadership. That's it.
Sorry, Jim and I attended a meeting today. A couple items, one, the dues were approved at eleven hundred dollars a year. They're going to be coming out in July, not twelve hundred, as we have in our budget. Jim and I were also selected into the executive committee. Kathy Green is still the chairman, and John Collins is the vice chairman. We had a, we went out order a little bit. Lance Asha Hara reported on the Santa Ana River Mainstream project. The total cost is going to be, I mean, once it's all completed, is two point three seven billion dollars. Total Prado cost is eight hundred and eighty-eight million dollars and a few, few thousand. And that cost has gone down because there's five hundred and sixty-three acres left behind the dam that has to be acquired still. But the people that are buying the land, the industrial people are raising their foundations ten feet, so that's above the flood plain, so they don't have to purchase that land. Last year, they only acquired fifty acres of land. Because I asked that question, I said, I'd say they'd acquire anymore, I think they only acquired fifty acres last year. Let's see.
But because of that development, it took a couple hundred acres off of the table.
Yeah, it did, it took, it was...
So it really saved our butts a lot of money.
It was seven fifty left of acres, now it's down to five sixty-three, which is pretty significant. And I think the, they're now in a position to be able to fund the rest of the Prado dam based on some loans that they're going to get, and the corps is going to reimburse them, so it's going to proceed further. Let's see. And the state has been coming up with their share of the sevention funds, which they were really excited about. I think they're almost all paid up. A few years ago, they weren't paying anything. Now they're paying that money back. They've already been paying that down, so that's why they have the additional monies. And we got a, Jim McConnell in Washington gave us the phone report, conference report. He said the appropriations for all of the water and energy programs have been kind of slowed down because of the sequestration, which is affecting our program also. But he feels that we're going to get more money from the Congress than the president authorized, like forty percent more. It's going to probably have to be in January when the omniscus bill gets approved. So that's, that's a good, good thing. And then it's been slowed down because of the contention of the water of the, of the US bill, all the environmentalists and the EPA trying to get this bill passed, and a lot of people are slowing that down because even the Democrats are against, a lot of them are against that bill. So that's slowing down the payment of all of the energy and water funding. Then they talked about the West Minister feasibilities. This is what Lance went back to this, he went back to the West Minister channel, and it's being funded fully. And the first set of plans are going to be out in September two thousand fifteen. It's fully funded. Public are going to be able to look at the review in December of this year. The final report is going to be made two thousand sixteen, and the final chief's report will come out in November two thousand sixteen. And Kathy Green asked if the cities that are interested, that are part of this, you know, Fountain Valley, Huntington Beach, the cities along the Santa Ana, the West Minister channel are going to get information of what the final report are, the final report says, so they can defend their position and not, maybe not like what the chief's report's going to say. But you'll probably be part of that, won't you, Alan?
No, not, I wouldn't want to.
You won't?
Yeah.
But I thought it was a real good session, and I think that's about all we talked about. It took the whole hour, huh?
Did they tear down the...
I think that's in discussion, I think they're planning to take it...
They were supposed to start this week, tearing that thing down.
I know, that, that was on an agenda that I don't know. I don't know, I heard the same thing.
Tear what down? That seventeen, that, that thing for the two hundred, seventeen seventy-six.
Oh, no, no, no. They're, they're, they put that, there's still contention on that.
There's a bunch of groups that are trying to buy it out or something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my report, and I've got, if anybody would like to look at the package, you're welcome to. And, well, one last thing, Lance also talked about all of the reaches along the Santa Ana River, says they're almost all complete, or will be by the end of this year, which is pretty good. We were kind of surprised at that also.
We're really making progress.
Really is, going fast. But that's my report.
Good stock?
There was no, I think, a good stock.
Yeah, there was.
I don't have anything to report.
I, I see you don't. Essentially, we, we talked about what we did earlier, the vote for the bylaw changes. Sandra Atkinson, an Aqua report, got a little contentious occurring, Director Pfister, because Sandra was recommending one of her board members to be on the Aqua board, and apparently Jim Atkinson from Mesa Water is running for the same thing. As Sandra sort of was in the middle of her thing, Director Pfister piped up with, he would be supporting Jim Atkinson, so I think Aqua's a pretty contentious organization anyway, if you're even semi-royal of them. She also talked about a fireworks ban in some cities because of the drought. I don't think that's happened in the custom area. We confirmed that Jennifer Muir will be the speaker at the July thirtieth meeting.
That's what it is, July thirtieth?
Thirtieth, July thirtieth, quarterly meeting. And then the only other thing I really wanted to mention was that Kelly Hubbard in the OC operational area is doing some training at the county EOC. No, I mean, I don't know if you'll be getting information, or Scott, one of you, somebody will be, August eleventh and August twenty-sixth, we picked two dates for Kelly to do EOC training out at the facility. It says county EOC, not Muir. Is that the same thing?
Emergency Operations Center.
Well, we already did that one.
Yeah.
Maybe part of Muir outreach.
I'll find out Tuesday if they're going, what they're going to send to you also. And that was really it for his doc. The thirtieth? July thirtieth, in the quarterly, right? No, not yet. Arlie, CSDA?
CSDA, do you all have the program for Monterey?
Don't miss the SDR May breakfast, because that speaker from the FBI will...
I know.
Did you, were you up in Sacramento?
No, we, that was last year.
Yeah, that's right, this guy will, don't miss it.
Yeah, it's good.
What day is that? Wednesday morning, I think. Okay, that's what, that's okay. The SDR May breakfast, they don't even put his picture in there because he's fortunately at the FBI. He'll scare the Jesus out of you.
Is that part of the package, we have to pay extra for that?
No, no, it's part of...
The SDR may is graciously buying you a breakfast night.
Yeah. And, God, this air conditioning is getting to me. Anyway, on the legislation end of it, we've been going back and forth on this trailer bill, eight twenty-five, the consolidation, and it did pass by the governor. And what it means is, and it's scary, because it means that the legislation, legislators could anytime say, new water district and new water district are consolidated together, and without going to LAFCO. That's a big thing. And so, you know, we're opposing it as CSDA, and we feel that, you know, you need to work more with us, you need to talk about it, and each special district's different, and you need to take that into consideration. So we're having all kinds of meetings on this, you know, on the phone, and we've had a webinar that took a half a day. In fact, I came down here and did the webinar just because we had a meeting right after. And then, let's see, you already know about Les Willi, you know about the state session. Sacramento, I attended along with Art and with Scott, Ledge Day, and that was really good, believe it or not. It really was. Harper, we got to know Harper, which was interesting, you know, because I thought he was very nice, he took us down on the floor, he put up on the board, welcomed, goes to Mesa Sanitary District, and took pictures, and, you know, very, yeah, well, not everybody does fluff.
No, I, I, I didn't say fluff was bad.
No, no. And then, of course, we met with Morlock, and that was good, too, and opportunity to see his office and about him. And by the way, I did go to his office down here, I didn't put it down, though. And he's in Irvine, he has an office, and out by the airport. And it's interesting because they can get away with it not having an elevator, or, and yet it's a two-story, and people have to climb up it. And, let's see, that's about it, yeah, on all this, yeah. Just that we're all signed up on this for Monterey, so that that's done. Yeah. And on mine, it's going to take terribly because I get a cut because of being on the board. And then I will be going up, back up to Sacramento the ninth and tenth of this month, July, coming up. And for a meeting, it's CSDA board meeting, which makes it hard because it's the same time that the orientation for the fair, so that's not too soon, but that's okay. Anyway, that's about it.
I think it'll come in.
Sure.
The leadership, you know, I think we talked about this before. It was great because we got to see the representatives, but I don't know if I would go unless we had that same situation, you know?
We can one-on-one.
Yeah, one-on-one, because all of the other people that we were assigned a group with, we bailed out of that group because we had our own trouble.
And we got in trouble for it, but it was well worth our time to visit with these guys. I would, I would suggest that if we can do that again, you guys should consider going.
Yeah, we're still in trouble. Bill Nelson won't let me forget that. See, he shows me on the iPhone, here's a picture of missing you off Costa Mesa Sanitary District people, you know, because.
Did you show him your picture of us?
That's our representative.
Remind Mr. Wilson that we paid to be there.
Nelson.
Nelson.
What did I say?
Wilson.
Whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Remind Mr., remind Bill that, that we paid to be there.
Well.
Um, on that same subject of the CSDA conference in September, um, I'm gonna be in Lake Tahoe the week before for a California Joint Powers Authority meeting. So, um, rather than come home to Costa Mesa and then go to Monterey, I will miss our September board meeting. So.
We, we changed that.
Oh, because it's before, we moved it before then.
Yeah. We moved it from CSDA, and it conflicts, so I've already let Scott and Nolani know. It's Art, I'd ask you, I'm gonna try to break your record.
Oh, gee.
Um, SDRMA, uh, we did have a board meeting earlier in the month, but it was a very non-eventful board meeting. We had some tidy up items and, um, some budget things that we did, nothing really that affects the district. Our meeting in, in, in August, we're going up, once a year, SDRMA goes on a field trip. They go to a special district to kind of see how things are going. You know, last year, we went to the Cemetery District down Palm Springs and saw Frank Sinatra's grave and, and all of that. Uh, this year, we're going to some fire authority up in Sacramento. And, uh, they better not make me carry any hoses during the round. Okay, um, other meetings qualifying for reimbursement. Would you like to talk about Waco Director?
Actually, my notes are out in the, uh, out in my car. I had to go get them, but.
That's okay.
It, it was a very, it was a very good meeting. Uh, they talked about the, uh, the court case that decided that tiered rates are illegal, but they have to be tied to costs. And, um, you know, I thought it was a good, the, there was a resident, the resident who really brought the case there and the attorney, and I forget if there was a third speaker, but anyway, I thought they were.
There was a third speaker.
Yeah, I think it was pretty eloquently done.
Right.
Um, they, you know, they all spoke to different aspects, and basically the court said, said tiered rates are not illegal. They just can't be arbitrary, have to be tied to.
Tied to costs, yeah.
I, I, I was there also, and Jim, or you're there. And then, like, the day after that session, Newport comes out with his rate increases. And they'll take, fulfill the obligation of.
Well, somebody had to take the test.
I know, did.
That's what I'm saying, like the, so is that San Juan Capistrano?
San Clemente.
San Clemente.
San Clemente, yeah.
San Juan Capistrano.
No, it was Capistrano.
The race to San Juan Capistrano.
Yeah, that's, yeah, San Juan.
Well, if I had my notes here, they'd probably say San Clemente also.
Or they might say San Diego.
Well, didn't they also, the water district, refund seven million dollars to the.
Four?
Huh?
They've recompared me, no.
How much?
Four.
Okay.
That's what I said, and the next day Newport comes out, who raised it a rate? And I don't know if they have the same criteria. Let's see.
Well, if not, you know, then they'll potentially have to change it in the future. The other, other meeting I attended was the organics meeting, and we talked a lot about the rollout of the program. Uh, and I think it was at a meeting where we decided we'd increase the number of pails. Um, anyway, staff had sixteen hundred pails available. Uh, we also discussed, uh, leaving up the president's status of the, uh, people, the exemptions. And, um, basically tried to decide when residents can make the changes and, uh, staff and the vendor, try, CRNR, um, kind of, uh, I think we decided at that point, you know, try to get the residents to kind of let it settle down for a week or two, and, you know, and then, then they can either do the exemptions or, uh, not, and turn in the carts or not that they want, or ask for more carts, so.
After it's rolled out completely, how many organics carts can we get without paying?
Two.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Why, are they gonna drop off two?
They'll only drop off one to begin.
Ask for one more.
They can ask for, well, they can ask for as many as they want.
Son Jeff asked that question. I, I, that's what I thought, and I think you'd get two. Jeff West said, he says, when are you gonna pick up the other one? I said, after everything's done. Then they'll pick up and give you more.
So then they'll make the, the corrections. It was a good meeting. I wish it had been.
I don't worry.
Well, I was at the hospital with my wife.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
If somebody says they don't want a cart.
Yeah.
And they don't have room for it and so forth, who's the one that comes out?
They have to get an exemption.
She and our, she and our.
We both go out, she and our, and our staff goes out.
That's what I wondered, okay.
We both go out and determine. Um, I missed the Waco meeting because I, I was at Waldorf School, formerly Canadian School, presenting their stipend for the battery thing. Um, it was a little, a little different because, you know, normally when we go, we go to like Flag Deck or whatever, and there's all thousands of kids out there. This was just the sixth grade or somebody, it was a, there was only one class involved with this thing. So we took pictures with just this one. The class, the night before, had just gotten back from some field trip to the San Juan Islands up in the Seattle area. Thinking, I need to go to Waldorf soon. But, uh, they were a great bunch of kids, you know, we have the check, and it said, you know, payable to Waldorf School, and this one little kid says, can I have that check? I said, is your name Waldorf? And he goes, it can be.
That's cute.
So those, I know we get, we get jabbed by some people in the community that we go to these, the duty. I get a, I bet you that, but I get a kick out of going to these schools, because these kids are also, also great. So, anyway, that's why I missed the Waco meeting.
I did, I did David, Davis Magnet School.
And I did Adams.
Was Lisa there? Was Lisa Medrane there?
Yes, she was, yeah.
Cool.
And I did Adams.
I did California School. California School's tough, because that's where my kids went to school. But I also coached the principal in Little A, and I always tell the kids that, you know, and then. And that's a great kid, that person, a great, great principal. Okay, any other items that we need to discuss?
I just, I just have a question about pails that, you know, that you brought up. Are we providing those to everybody that wants it? And how many do we have on hand?
Uh, got about.
Another thousand.
Yeah. You did order the two thousand.
I'll have that number to you next week.
I'm just curious. I saw the pictures of it.
Pictures are amazing. It's headed towards six hundred, I think.
It's slowing down every day, but next week's in the neighborhood, so that'll season picks up.
How long does it take you to get it if you have to order more?
We just placed another order, so it takes about a week.
Okay.
We placed another order since we know.
About a week to come from Canada.
My wife wanted to know what it was when I bought it. Are they watching?
Yeah, you're gonna hang yourself on her.
Okay, um, no old business, no new business. Oral communications and director comments, directors?
I have a comment, um, on like, after our board meeting, and this next month in July, I'm gonna go on vacation. So I may be missing the study session, in case you, I'm not here.
In August?
Yeah, in August.
I'll miss the July and August study session.
I would just ask everybody then to send Nolani a note on your anticipated absence, just so that she has a record.
Yeah, I'll check the date. I'll have to check the date of the study session, but I was just thinking that I may not be there.
Which?
I think it's like the.
Twenty-third?
Which, which month?
Which month?
August, like, first. I'm gonna be back by two, two weeks.
It's fourteen.
I should be back by then. I should be back.
Yeah, I will, I will be back in.
Just so you don't have to call them.
I got an excuse, I could be here the twenty-third of July.
I'm stuck in Tampa, why?
Now, July the twenty-third is Costa Mesa Day at the fair.
Right.
Just so you know.
Yeah, you got a note.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, other director comments. I just wanted to take just a second and, and I think this rollout went really well this week. I want to thank staff for the preparation and everything you did. Um, you know, we got, sometimes I'm a little too thin-skinned when I read these blogs that attack us for decisions we make and processes that we go through, and comparisons that, like I told you the other morning, Scott, we, we, we got blasted in one blog because Newport, you know, this guy listed this thing of all the stuff that Newport gets that we don't get. And it had nothing to do with each other. It was just unbelievable. Um, I'm proud of what we do as a district. I'm proud of the staff for what they do. And so I just want to publicly say that, that, um, I think we reach out. I've, since I've been on this board, I've learned so much from you four people and staff people. We're really innovative. We reach out, we go, we're so proactive that it's, you know, you know, people would come to these. I expected people to be here tonight to talk about this stuff. Because, because they, one guy in the, in the Daily Pilot, I don't know if you read it, the guy with the pit bulls. He says, you're on my, he says, you've got my attention now. Because we didn't raise, I mean, it was just kind of a, a weird thing, so. Over, we have, he says, now that you've rolled out this organic stuff, you know, you need to lower my rates. You haven't lowered my rates, so now you've got my attention. Anyway, I just want to publicly say thank you to, to you four for the support and staff for what I think is a great job.
Yeah, good team.
It is a great team.
I have a question, but Nolani, you know, we, I submitted my request to go to the, the fair on the twenty-third. How, what's that process now that we get from you?
So Kelly from the city will let, you know, what time to report to, to the fairgrounds.
When you go in that side gate, you'll have your name on a list?
What side gate?
Over in front of Costa Mesa, or, uh, it's on Arlington?
Arlington.
Okay.
Five.
Side gates.
Five.
Five?
Okay, Zach, can we pull in there and?
And they'll have, they'll check you on.
Okay.
Is that run by the, is that the city function?
It's by the city. The city's inviting me.
Now, remember, Jim, last year was Fountain Valley was there too, remember? It's more than one city.
Usually they say a couple of cities.
Yeah.
What, what is it, or when?
It's on twenty-third, like noon, I think.
July twenty-third.
I think it's right at the opening of the fair.
And then what happens, well, no, the opening of the fair is seventeen.
No, I mean, the opening time.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
For the day.
Yeah. And then, uh, after that, on the twenty-third, we have all the Special Olympics right there. The people are all gonna be there.
What, what event are you going for on that day?
It's the, uh, benefit of fairgrounds, the opening day.
Costa Mesa Day.
So Costa Mesa Day.
And, uh, of the dignitaries?
Yeah, we're invited. I mean, Nolani sent you an email.
They just take a picture.
If you want to take.
Read that email.
This is at the hangar.
Oh, it's at the hangar, okay.
Yeah.
They go like the.
Twenty-third.
It's quite a walk down from the park to the hangar. I mean, if it's hot out, man, you're gonna be.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wear a coat.
They're pretty good, though. They have golf carts where they.
No, I didn't.
One thing we need to do is make sure we get an order of beef fried cheese curds for no one.
Oh, gee.
That's a twenty-third, Bob.
The twenty-third?
I think it's around noon, but did, did, uh, did Bob reply to you?
No, not yet.
Is, are you gonna be able to go? Because she can send the list that she's.
That's the big deal.
I'll return it to you.
It's only two weeks ago, Bob.
We have a board meeting that night.
Oh, it's the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, we do have a board meeting.
Is that same night? Or is it on Thursday?
Because I got it all.
So it's a noon?
The day, the night, Thursday, the twenty-third.
That sounds good to me.
We don't have a board meeting on Wednesday, the twenty-third.
No, it's a Thursday.
Must be Thursday, be the twenty-fourth.
It's a Thursday, yeah.
The day, the day. Noon over at the.
The twenty-third?
You get golf. We'll be done, we'll be done.
It's a day, you're talking about, not the night.
Okay, um, all right, there are no other oral communications and comments. Um, I'm going to adjourn us to closed session to discuss litigation with counsel pursuant to government code five four nine five six point nine, uh, anticipated litigation with the Sanitary District and the San Ana Regional Water Control Board. Complaint number R eight twenty fifteen oh oh two five. All right, I will reconvene to open session and report that there is nothing to report in our closed session regarding the, uh, litigation um, with this, with the district and the San Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board, number R eight twenty fifteen oh oh two five, and no action is taken.